Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised, in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that all phones be turned to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. First on our agenda tonight is additions, additions and changes to the agenda. Dr. Chanel, our new superintendent.
Thank you. For first meeting, we're very excited.
Thank you.
And you are too.
Me too. I do have one addition for the board. You will see on the agenda that we had an auction that closed out on Friday, so that's been on the agenda all along. So in front of you is just the additional supporting materials.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following consent agenda items, 1 through 9. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're moving on to communications. First on communications is correspondence to Points of Pride. Liz, will you start us off?
Sure. I had a...
I'm going to get a chance.
There you go. There you go.
My eyes can't read it. Okay, congratulations to our middle school math team who finished their third and final competition. Our Raiders finished in second place in their division for the season.
And then Mrs. Hatch, our middle, high school literacy specialist, hosted a fun celebration for the middle school Raiders who more than doubled their ELA average growth score on IXL.
Junior achievement is back. Students in grades 10 through 12 have the opportunity to be a junior achievement high school hero. After a five-session training, the high school heroes are ready to teach financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work and career readiness at the elementary school.
Congratulations to the students who were selected for the 2025 All County Two Festival and Band Head Chorus. The concerts were amazing and we are proud of the Raiders who represented our music program so well.
Congratulations to the cast and crew of Coconut High for their amazing performances. Congratulations to Senior Lilly Fiskus, whose work was selected for RIT College of Art and Design's Start Year 2025 Art Exhibition at RIT's Fabioir Gallery.
The Finger Lakes Youth Apprenticeship Program, FLYAP, held its annual signing day ceremony at Genesee County College's Best Center. FLYAP is a career exploration program that provides students across the Rochester and Finger Lakes region the opportunity to explore and begin a career in advanced manufacturing while still in high school. We are proud to announce that eight of our students who attend GV Bosse's were matched with job shadows and internships.
We are also proud to announce that our Leroy Calmum football team was awarded the 2024 Section 5 Football Class C Sportsmanship Award from the Rochester Chapter of Certified Football Officials. And congratulations also to Chad Robinson, class of 2002. He was inducted into the LCAA Wrestling Hall of Fame at the 68th Annual LCAA Wrestling Championships. He joins his dad, 2007 inductee Charlie Robinson, class of 77, to become a father-son combo in the Wrestling Hall of Fame.
We were well represented at the Special Olympics Inclusive Youth Leadership Summit at Nazareth University's Galisono Training Center. Thank you to the Raiders who attended. We appreciate your commitment to inclusivity. Congratulations to Coach Reed. He reached 200 wins as a varsity girls' basketball coach for Caldonium Mumford.
The Raider Five on the Road campaign began in January 2025, and bus number 112, driven by Mr. Greer, was recognized as our January Bus of the Month for demonstrating outstanding positive behavior while riding the bus. To celebrate their commitment to the Raider Five, expectation students in grades kindergarten through grade 5 who ride on bus 112 enjoy a special ice cream treat as a reward. We look forward to recognizing more buses in the coming months.
On Tuesday night, our elementary band teacher, Mrs. Peterson, hosted a fantastic fourth-grade beginner band showcase in the gymnasium. Students and their loved ones had the opportunity to get a sneak peek into band lessons and the skills required to successfully learn an instrument. It was an engaging and inspiring evening for our young musicians and their families. We are proud of our students for their dedication to learning and growing in all areas.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we're going to move on to Dr. Chanel's update from her first week as superintendent.
Yes, I just want to take a moment and say thank you, not just to all of you in this room, but also to the community. I had a very busy first week. It was challenging in all the right ways. Although I will miss being with the kids from day to day, I can honestly tell you that as superintendent, I've gotten to spend time doing just the wonderful things with them, like celebrating all of their successes. I'm humbled by the support that has been shown to me and the encouragement both in the walls of our school and across the community. So I'd like to say a special thank you here publicly for how special this community has made me feel for the last week. I am connected to a network of folks outside of our community as well, and I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to all of them. Every time I've called someone, they've picked up the phone. I've been surrounded by people who really want to see me succeed, and they're investing in me daily, and I could not be more appreciative and grateful. I'm also mostly grateful to be a Raider.
Thank you. Next, I would like to start a discussion with the board about our recent finalization of our work sessions with Adele. On January 30th, we completed our third work session with Adele. And to briefly summarize, in that session, we were able to sort of come up with or finalize some norms for the board, which you see in front of you. Thank you, Sue, for printing and placing them in front of you, that we're going to start to implement moving forward. We had great discussions around the use of them and the appropriateness of them. I believe what I saw in those sessions was a commitment from this board to do what's in the best interest of this district and kids in our district, and I'm pleased. I appreciate everyone's time. Those three work sessions, that was a lot of time that we dedicated towards that. I'm hopeful for the future. That was sort of my take, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board what their thoughts on that may be.
I can start. I said, recognizing that each one of us has different experiences and perspectives and generational differences, that those things can help us make decisions together. And we need to listen to each other and be open to hear different perspectives as we work together to do things for the district and for the kids.
I think most of us would probably echo that, that I think it was very useful to all of us, to benefit us all for, you know, regrouping and becoming cohesive again.
Useful is probably the word. I mean, if you have one word and one word only, useful. Period.
And I just want to...
Oh, please take it.
Just make a comment on the norms. I think for us, we decided to kind of model them after how both of those buildings have their Raider Five and Champion Five. And so we kind of did that for ourselves as a board to give us our board five, so that we are kind of modeling what we expect our children to do in their schools. They have their five that they're following, and we have our five that we are also following. And this is going to be for us to see and for future board members and for the public, so everyone knows the five that we hold ourselves to and we expect to hold each other accountable to.
All right. So I think the plan with that five, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, is that we're going to implement them. Obviously, we'll have them in front of us for the board meetings, and then in three to six months' time, we're going to relook at them and see if there's any changes or adjustments that need to be made. So I'll put that on my calendar to bring back up.
Did you want to read them aloud?
Five. Would you like, Peggy, would you tell me? Peggy, a lot of reading.
Okay, I'll read them.
Thank you, Peggy. I'm going to read it here.
Okay. The first one is respectful. We're committed to listening and asking questions to inform our decision-making. We're united. We will honor every voice and speak with one. Inclusive. We will ensure that all board members have the information necessary for good decision-making. Intentional. We will acknowledge all measures of success across our school community. And on mission. Students will be first in all of our decision-making.
Thank you. Something that came up as a result of us doing the work with Adele was the Caldonium Mumford Central School District Board of Education Operations and Procedural Manual. That came up several times in our work sessions. And as we were looking at that, reviewing that, it does need, it looks like it needs to be updated. The last time it was updated was in 2018. So I'm going to suggest that the board feels that's appropriate at this time, that putting a committee together to maybe look at that. I would like input, though, on if people still feel that would be a good idea.
At the very least, review it.
Yep.
And then edit. Yeah, I think that's something to read.
Who may be interested in doing that work?
Sure, sign me up. You know, I love a good committee meeting.
I can look at it for her.
Okay, awesome. So it's Peggy, and I will join. Unless Becca, you had a dire desire to...
I mean, I can if you want a third and you have enough that's going on. I can join them.
That would be great. You want to do it?
Yep.
Are you sure you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll get that scheduled with Dr. Chanel, and we'll figure out our schedules and start looking at that.
And can we get an email copy of it in advance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't think I located the actual Microsoft Word document.
Excellent.
Yes, I got you.
Thank you.
And I just want to also mention, because I think that was a good piggyback off our training and/or the work that we did as a board, that we recently re-enrolled as NISBA members. When I first started on the board, we were NISBA members, and I did a lot of training, both online and in person through that. So we are re-enrolled as NISBA members. This week, Sue will be sending out to your school addresses your login and password information. I encourage you to go on, look around. I did this week. And take advantage of any trainings that are there. There's some good ones, and you can even tailor it to what you want. I had a very good experience this week. I needed to reach out to NISBA regarding a question I had, and I got a call back from a lawyer from NISBA within 24 hours. They were very clear that they don't give legal advice, right, they're not going to advise us as a lawyer or as our counsel, but they could give me factual information and actually send me documents quickly. So I think that they're going to be a good tool for me to use as your school board president or for whomever's in this seat and for all of you to do trainings that you'd like to do. Is there questions about that? That will be coming soon. If you have problems with your login, reach out to probably Sue. Thanks, Sue.
Absolutely. We are also, we are, I think, set for a representative from NISBA to actually come out to a board meeting. I think they're going to come to the first board meeting in March and really talk to you about what all you get in terms of the resources on NISBA and answer some of your questions and make sure that you found your way navigating around their website. That way, we get what we pay for because we know what's there. So I'm excited to have them in to do that with us.
Moving on to board committee reports, I will start. I had the Legislative Liaison Committee that I'm on. I attended my first legislative breakfast on January 18th with Dr. Chanel and Mr. Malasani and was able to meet our newest Assemblywoman, Andrea Bailey. We had a small work session with her that was nice. She is, as you may or may not know, in place of or took the seat of Marjorie Burns. So that was nice to meet her and sort of get acclimated or introduced to other board presidents and such. We were supposed to have a Genesee Valley School Board Association meeting as well, but that got postponed due to weather. And so I believe that is, it was postponed to the 25th before our next board meeting. So I'll be attending that then. I also, oh, shared services. I'm going to let Becca do that one.
Okay, so we had this shared services meeting last week, and I attended that with Liz Dahl and Dr. Chanel. And that is the committee with our school and with the Leroy School District. So it has their superintendent and a couple of their board members on that committee as well. So we met and just kind of went over our, what had, the feedback we had gotten from the combined sports in the fall. So we had the whole football program, the varsity soccer, cross country, and then for the early winter, they also did modified wrestling. And overall, on both sides, for the Calmom side as well as the Leroy side, there was a lot of positive feedback. The athletes were happy with it. The coaches were happy. The community seemed to be really pleased with the whole overall program. The biggest bug or issue with it was the transportation and trying to figure out how to get that all to work smoothly so that we're not putting too much stress on either transportation department, which is, both of them are already stressed to begin with. And part of that is going to be working out scheduling, and the superintendents and the athletic directors have already started working on and figuring out how to make that go smoother for the fall. And this fall, we're going to have both the JV and the modified soccer combined as well. So with the entire football program, the entire soccer program, cross country, and then the modified wrestling again, early winter.
So. Thank you. Mrs. Rose, would you mind giving us an update on elementary compact?
Sure. I went to the compact meeting, and Lindsay Pete was there to give an explanation about the IXL program, which I myself knew nothing about. But it was very good. So she gave a presentation. It's for K through 12, and it's a program for the kids to help them mastering math and ELA programs and other subjects. And it's personalized for each student and tailored to them as they practice problems, as they learn things. And this is sort of a supplement to what their teachers are teaching during the classroom, and it helps to form assessments so we can see where everybody is and keep them going on the right track. And it sounds like people were very happy with it, and they like it better than what they had last year. And that's a good thing. And I think it was cheaper, too, wasn't it? So, and Lindsay did, of course, a wonderful job presenting it. And after that, the rest of the elementary PTO group was working on, a little bit on the Valentine sweetheart thing, and then looking ahead to the reading with parents part, whatever that is. Anyhow, and I helped decorate for the sweetheart dinner, and it was good. Everybody had a good time.
Thank you. Mrs. Dietrich, would you like to give a middle school, high school contact meeting update?
Yeah, we met last week and just went through a closer to final version of the middle school course curriculum and the flow of classes through that. We've made good progress. I think we'll give it one more review, and it should be this close.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Contract negotiations are coming up, and I would like to suggest that the three people on that committee, that's Mr. Millon, myself, and Dr. McNear, get together and meet to discuss the committee moving forward. They're meeting, you're going to meet preemptively with our new council and Jeremy on the 14th.
Yes.
And then the first planned negotiations meeting is on the 26th. So the four of us need to get together before that. Should we send, should I have Dr. Chanel send an email so we can coordinate that?
That works.
Sounds good.
Mr. Bellnick?
Yeah.
Is it?
We're busy.
Yeah. We'll do our best to make it possible for you to attend.
Whatever works for you, and if I can fit in, yeah, I will, certainly.
Sounds good.
On the way in, he told me he got done working at 2:00 AM, maybe.
Maybe 3:00.
That's unhealthy behavior we don't talk about.
I looked through the committee sheet, and I don't think there was any other committee meeting. So if I missed any, please speak up. Did anybody else meet and I missed it? Okay. Fantastic. Next, guests of the board. We have Mr. Don and you here with us tonight to give us status update on our capital project, recent bids, and to answer any other questions. Thank you for coming.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I'm going to start with publicly congratulating Dr. Chanel
Thank you.
and our superintendency. I'm happy to be part of your first board meeting. I'll give a quick summary of, and schedule recap of where we've been since the referendum vote. If everyone will entertain me for like two minutes, I'll go quick. But just to bring everyone back, last December of '23, the community referendum supported the project vote. From there, we kicked off pre-construction and the design process. That went almost all the way through '24. So the designers designed the project. Campus provided estimating services all the way through to stay on budget. Went into SED for state approval in early May. That took about six and a half months. We came out with approvals by mid-December. We made a valid decision to start the bidding process prior to the holidays, get the plan holders engaged, get the recruitment started, and ultimately opened bids at the end of January, January 28th. So we're happy to report, like done in the past. We customized the bid strategy, and we did a public bid opening on the 28th. We also solicited and secured two state contract proposals and two cooperative bid proposals. So similar to what we've done in the past, we looked at the scopes of work, the available materials and vendor, and the project as a whole, and tried to procure in the most advantaged and economical way for the district. We are happy to report that right now, standing here, we're asking for recommendations for contracts, and we're about 15% under budget. So financially, the district's in great shape. For Dr. Chanel's first meeting, we do have several actions we're asking for tonight from the board. We've provided recommendations for, number one, the superintendent to have the ability and be authorized to sign contracts. We're also seeking approval for her to have the ability to sign change orders up to but not to exceed $34,999. We choose that number because at $35,000, it starts engaging municipal bidding laws. So in-house, the district has the ability to approve change management up to $35,000. That's a practice we followed in the district for years, and we want to continue it along. It does help, the advantage is, it's more efficient. It keeps the project flowing, and it gives the team the ability to keep moving forward. I will remind the board, we do monthly reports, so there's full transparency. We'll provide a monthly report with an updated schedule, an executive summary, an updated budget, including the change management. So there's full transparency. The board and the district administration will always see the flow of dollars and where the budget sits. The second recommendation that we're bringing to the table, it's a series of technically four recommendations, but we are seeking approval for the publicly bid contracts. We have a separate recommendation for approval of the cooperative bid for the roofing contract, the cooperative bid for the auditorium seating contract, and lastly, the cooperative, or the state contract purchasing for the access controls and security. So all of the recommendations have been provided. The backup is there, including the budget, to support the district's authorization. Pending approval tonight, if it's a success, we'll be issuing contracts this week. We'll have a kickoff meeting in the next week or two with all the newly awarded contractors. At the kickoff, we go through all the, you know, the lay of the land, the logistics of the project, how it's going to be administered, how we're going to maintain, you know, safe, secure, and good quality control in the district. And the contractors will start securing their bonds insurance, material orders, and all that good stuff. We have a construction start date of this spring, as early as May 1st. And then the total project, to remind everyone, will be about 18 months' construction for a completion of August 26th and closeout in the fall. So from referendum in December through current date, we're right exactly where we planned to be in terms of milestone schedule. We're looking for awards tonight, get the contractors rolling, and then we can start delivering the construction process, just as we intended, you know, when we started planning this more than 18 months ago. So I'm here to field any questions or comments.
I'll make at least one comment, which I won't make now when we go down into the actual recommendations, but Canvas did a fantastic job really getting people excited about our project. So as I was sitting next to Superintendent Malasani, one of his last days when we did bid openings, we were bringing chairs from every place you could imagine in district office. The room was packed, and Superintendent Malasani said it was the most he'd ever seen in bid opening. So that level of competition certainly is part of what made things favorable for us. So I'd like to just say to Canvas Construction, thank you for all your extra work of getting our plans out on the street and making sure people stayed interested. It mattered for us in the end. Appreciate it.
No, thank you for recognizing that. We appreciate it. It timings everything, and we caught the right window for bid opportunities. And we did, we were, we had great participation, which, yes, it's our process and service, but honestly, we'd never known until bid day who was going to show up with envelopes, and it was a good day. So in competition prevailed, we got good pricing.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
One last comment. And I'm sorry to have to do this in twofold, but we will be bringing another recommendation at a future meeting before construction starts for the third-party inspection services. So we're still getting proposals in for that and making sure it's competitive and timed out. But there will be one more recommendation coming your way before May that asks for, to sign up, it's third-party inspections, which are part of the state requirement for capital projects. So they're third-party vendors that, we coordinate the whole process, but we go and get competitive pricing so that it's economical for the district.
Mr. Millnick, you have a question?
I have a question. Yes, sir. First, thanks for your relationship with the district. I feel like we're in good hands, and I appreciate
Thank you.
the commitment to it. It's a question for Mr. Nardone. With this capital project, do we qualify as a government entity for the 20% capital investment tax credit?
Tax credit? I'm going to say no, but I'll research it, and I'll get back to you at the next meeting or before that.
So, yeah, sorry. I just, I thought about that. Well, it was good.
Yeah, I'm going to say no, but I'll definitely reach back out to you, so.
That'd be very interesting.
Does that sound familiar to you at all?
No, only because we don't file the tax process as much, but I'd be interested to see where it goes. If that's an opportunity for other districts, would it...
I feel like that spurred a lot of construction in New York State. It's a New York State specific.
Yeah. The school projects are already state-funded, so I wonder if they would let you double debt, but...
We don't file any taxes, but I can look and see if there's any rebates available.
I doubt it. Yeah, okay.
And that's just off the cuff as a reaction. So just don't take it too literally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is a forum. We do not have any of us come on and sign up, so we are going to go on to superintendent's report with Dr. Chanel, and she's going to report off on a state comptroller's fiscal determination.
So we do each year get a report from the comptroller that talks about our financial health, and you will be glad to know that the comptroller has said that we are financially healthy, we are fiscally healthy. So that's fantastic. I was on a call today with some superintendents across the state. That is not true for everyone. So as much as maybe they didn't love our reserves in the last round, our reserves definitely factor into this particular score, and it shows very healthy and favorable for the district. So congratulations. The other piece I would like to talk about with you all, I sent in an email. I made you aware that our school district calendar actually has a misprint. So I want to talk about that tonight in this forum so that people can maybe learn about it from us. We actually are off by a day in July and August. So our district calendar has a misprint. Bosse's has acknowledged that. They have, as part of the way they were saying they're sorry to us for that misprint, they are going to reprint a calendar for us. It will just be a spring edition. And we will be then mailing out new calendars to all of our residents so that they have one that's updated to all of our residents so that they have one that's updated and don't make mistakes scheduling their things in July and August. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, this old business, there is no old business, so we're going to move to new business. Number one, change order approval. Resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Facilities Committee, authorize the superintendent of schools to approve change orders up to $34,999.99 for the 2025-26 capital project. May I have a motion, please?
So, moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Seems reasonable.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Two and three, we have pilot payment in lieu of taxes presentation by Mr. Nardone and draft tax cap presentation by Mr. Nardone. So, you are up.
Okay.
All right. So, these are presentations that we started last year. We thought they were very helpful because it's all about transparency. All our presentations, all our documents that are required by law are posted on our website. This will be posted on our website within the next 48 hours, given that our technology person is also the interim middle high school principal at the time, so I want to give some time there. But we post everything, and obviously, if you have any questions throughout the presentation, feel free to stop me, or at the end, we'll leave it open as well. So, pilot presentation, what is a pilot? What does it stand for? It's an acronym. So, it stands for payment in lieu of taxes. So, payment instead of taxes. It's an agreement made to give tax incentives to companies to come into the town or the village. So, for example, if they want to bring jobs to a certain town, they're going to negotiate with the IDA or the county to try to get a tax incentive to come here to give job sports people. These payments are received and recorded differently than tax revenue, so it's not included in that 1001 function code. It's the 1081 code, and that's where you'll see the pilots. And again, these assessments and the assessed value of these pilots are not included on the tax rolls. So, how is a pilot created? Again, pilots are created going through the Industrial Development Agency or the IDA for that individual county. They are negotiated to bring infrastructure and jobs to the county, and agreements are usually 10 years. We're seeing 20 years now with solar, and we actually have two solar projects that are going to be coming on our books shortly, so I wanted to point that out. So, how does a pilot end? After a pilot has fulfilled its 10-year or 20-year contract, there are two options that it could, that it could have, and it gets assessed. The first one is the pilot gets renewed. If the company says, hey, I want another tax break, or I'm going to pack up and move my company out of here, or I can add more jobs, we're going to add a wing, and I'm going to add a cleaner and a mechanic and all that stuff. Sometimes, the IDA will negotiate the contract and renew it to keep that pilot going so that they don't close up shop and leave. Or, the pilot can simply end, and at that time, the assessed value goes back onto the books, and that affects your tax cap calculation. And we'll get into that a little later, but usually, when the pilots come back on the books, assessments increases. When assessments increases, the tax rate decreases. So, your public a lot of times wants these pilots to end, but then it has consequences on your tax cap formula that we'll get into, for sure. And why are pilots important? It's a component of the tax gap. You subtract out certain pilots, add in certain pilots that we'll get into, so it's very important there because it's an exclusion that allows you to either tax more or tax less to the community when a pilot starts or ends. And again, if a new pilot is formed, assessments can decrease. If they're currently on the roll and they come off the roll, assessments are going to decrease, and then your tax rate's going to skyrocket. Whenever a pilot's going to be added, the superintendent, myself, will attend a meeting with the town or the village, and then will go over the pilot. And one of my questions that I always have, is that pilot currently on the tax roll? Sometimes it's a no. If it's a yes, we'll usually try to get that dollar amount. What is that assessed value? If it's $50,000, that means $50,000 is going to come off the books. Tax rates are going to go up just a little bit, not much that people will even notice. If it's $50 million, it's going to go up a lot more, and then we're going to have a lot of questions because that's going to be questions that we got to field from the community. This is the list of our current pilots. So, really, right now, we have two pilots. We're going to add a third here in '25-'26. The first one is Amp Me Up. It's a 10-year pilot. It concludes at the end of the 2032-2033 school year, and we're estimated to bring in roughly $11,000 during the '25-'26 school year. The CRC, Commodity Resource Corporation, again is a 10-year pilot. It ends in '27-'28. The reason that is important is because when that pilot ends, the tax cap is probably going to be over 4% in that year. We'll get to it when we get to the tax cap presentation, but I wanted to point that out to you to know when a pilot ends, especially $103,000, our tax levy's roughly 8 million. That's about 1.2% on the levy that it's going to increase year over year. So, say if you do your tax cap calculation, it's normally 2%, 2.5%, it's now going to be 3.2 or 3.7. And then we have Calidonia CSG, which is our first solar. That is, I've been in a lot of meetings on this, a lot of email communication. They are estimating that this is going to start in '25-'26. The reason it's important to know when this starts is because it affects your tax gap. If we have inaccurate numbers, then sometimes you have to do an adjustment to the tax cap formula in the subsequent school year. So, it's one of those things, it's such a low dollar amount, being $3,300, that it's not material in the eyes of the state and the comptroller, but definitely something we want to be on top of. And then the horseshoe solar, this actually was supposed to happen this year, but it just got delayed, and now it's not estimating to happen until at least '26-'27. More likely now, '27-'28, they're trying to work out all the kinks with the, with the contract and the deal there. That is estimating to bring in about $274,000 over the 30 years as of right now. That is subject to change, and again, the more pilot revenue you bring in, the less you'll be able to go out and tax the community. So, it's one of those things we're always going to watch and look for. And with that, I'll open it up. Does anybody have any questions on the pilot?
I have one question.
Sure.
So, I think I've done in my 11 years on the board when one of a pilot was renewed or extended.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't recall, how much time do we have in advance to know that? Is there, so, for instance, the...
Calidonia CSG?
Yes, there you go.
So, that's coming off the books in '27-'28.
When would we be informed if there was a renewal, or we wouldn't? We could be told that...
It's definitely something that the district will follow up on in that year. So, probably at the beginning of the year, we'll be reaching out to the towns and the villages and the counties to see if that is going to end, because we're going to need to project for the next year when you do your tax gap. So, the latest you're going to know is March 1st, because that's the deadline we have to submit the tax gap, but that's something that you definitely want to have on your calendars, probably that July 1.
Just be aware. Okay.
Can they know a little earlier? I would say they can, but it's probably something they're going to wait till almost the last minute to renegotiate. But if there's talks of that happening, we should know that by March 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the pilots?
All right. A quick one here.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be beyond, and I think the answer's yes, beyond the scope of our duty, towns can now opt out of solar pilots, would it be beyond the scope for us to send a letter to the communities in which we participate in and say, we would encourage you to consider this, just because of the lack of revenue when those are completely taken off the tax rolls?
Yeah, it's definitely something that some places have done, and then other places, what they'll do is they'll negotiate to pay the pilot all upfront in year one. So, it's not a 20-year agreement, it's just a payment all upfront to get it done and over with, and then they're obviously not paying taxes for the next 19 years until that pilot ends. But then you don't have that, that come off at the end of the year, or at the end of the pilot agreement.
Right.
So, definitely something that people should talk about and will talk about, because it's one of those things that, why is it becoming a pilot? That's the main question. Why is it going to be a pilot? Is there a reason for it? Usually, those, that land, it's just land, it's not going to be assessed very high, so the tax implications on the vacant land are going to be minimal, but definitely something still that we can look into, for sure. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can you just sit, please? Thank you. And now we'll go to the tax gap. I love the pictures on these. Thank you, Susan. They look amazing. Doesn't take much to get me excited. All right, so the draft tax gap presentation, again, this is required by law to be submitted on March 1st. It is ready to go. Definitely something we wanted to present to the board before we hit that final okay. And regardless of the fact if we're done now, we always like to wait until February 28th to submit it, just in case there's any changes. So, we'll usually follow up with our pilots and our capital exclusion that last week in February, just to make sure everything's right. So, understanding the tax cap formula, tax cap came into play in the 2012-2013 school year. Governor put it into play to make it a little bit more difficult on school districts to increase taxes. It is known as the 2% tax cap. Funny thing is, is 2% is only one factor of the tax cap formula. There's all, there's many factors that go into it. I could show you the long list of formulas and make it very difficult to understand, and that's what the state likes to do. They like to put complex formulas involved that people don't really understand what's going on. So, again, constituents, taxpayers, they believe that the tax cap is 2%. Anything more, they think you're overriding. That's not true. There's many factors that go into it. There's the pilots, both current and subsequent year. There's a tax-based growth factor. There's current and subsequent year capital debt exclusions, tort exclusions, and there's also contribution increases on the ERS and TRS retirement systems. That's teachers' retirement system and employees' retirement system. Teachers is for your certified staff, like your teachers and your admin. Employees' retirement system is for all your classified staff. If those rates go up more than 2% in a given year, they allow you to take that exclusion and actually go tax for it because the rates are going up more than anticipated. We actually did see that last school year, and the exclusion came out to, I think, $3,500. So, it's not much because it is capped, and there's also tort and, like, if you're getting sued or torts and stuff like that, there's also exclusions for them as well. So, pilots, we just went over the pilot presentation. So, again, pilots are a big part of it. Rate of inflation, each January, the rate of inflation for schools with fiscal years, beginning July 1, ending June 30th, come out. This year, the rate of inflation was over 2%, so we're capped at that 2%, and that's what that 2% misconception is. There's a tax-based growth factor. What this is, is new constructions of homes, stores, and offices. It is not any additional increases in assessment. So, year over year, when your assessed value goes up on your house, that does not affect this growth factor. So, in essence, what you can do is multiply your levy by this factor. So, if this factor's anything over 1, you're automatically going to be over that 2%. Does that make sense? And this year, it was 1.0066, which is a lot higher than it was last year at 1.0018. So, that means we're seeing new construction. We're seeing those additions to homes and people working on their homes, and that's awesome to see. Debt exclusions. So, again, we look at our current and subsequent year debt, and we compare our aid to our debt expense. In times where our expense is greater than our aid, we can go out and tax for that. When our aid is greater than our debt, that's a subtraction. They're saying you can't tax your community because you're getting it from the state. And again, for building aid, we get roughly 84%. That'll fluctuate year over year, so if you see that, don't be alarmed. It goes as low as about 80.9 and as high as about 86. We're about 83 right now, but we just keep it 84 just to be safe. And also, transportation, that's aid on any transport, qualified transportation expenses, and that's at 74%. Pension increases, again, if those two retirement systems increase more by 2%, you're allowed an exclusion for your salary, the difference between your salaries and that 2%. Tort exclusions, you can increase your reliance on your voters if you have costs that exceed 5% of the prior year levy. Prior year levy is roughly 8 million, that's $7,923,478 to be exact. Let's just say 8 million to make math simple. That's in excess of $400,000, something that you're not going to see regularly. And then you have carryover. So, to get into carryover, I'll get into the next slide here. To have carryover, in essence, you will not have carryover if you have a capital exclusion. So, if you look at carryover calculation one, you take your prior year levy, you multiply it by 1.5. The reason why this is important is if districts don't go to a certain tax cap number, let's say your tax cap is 3, and you go out below it, and say you go out at 1.5. If you go out low enough, there's a calculation that says you're going to lose that, and you can never get it back. Luckily, we don't have that worry because we have the capital exclusion, and that's why carryover calculation number two is always negative. When it's, whenever, you always take the lower of, but they don't penalize you. So, because it's a negative number, you just get a zero. And that is because we finance all our borrowing. So, think about it, if we get 84% back on our building aid, we're going to spend 100% to get 84%. So, you're always going to have that negative exclusion. Where districts will get a positive exclusion there is when they have aid in excess of their debt. So, they finance a capital project or buses in cash. That is something that Kelmum has historically not done, and it's a big, big undertaking to get that into your budget. So, how the tax cap formula affects the vote? If the district's put out to vote within the tax cap, so let's say our tax cap is 2%, if we go out at 2% or less, all we need is a simple majority. So, that is 50% plus one vote. If we try to override the tax cap, again, let's say our tax cap is at 2, and we want to go out at 2.01, now you need a supermajority, and you need at least 60% of your voters to pass that. Supermajority is very hard to obtain. A lot of districts, even local districts, have trouble passing that supermajority. It just draws more attention. And you also have to report that to the state as well, that you're going out for a supermajority. This is our tax cap formula. So, again, you start with that prior year levy. Always start with the prior year. You multiply it by the tax-based growth factor. Again, if it's anything over 0, you're going to have a higher amount than that 2%. You add in your current year pilots. I call it the prior year because whenever we're doing the budget, we're doing the budget for the '25-'26 year. The prior year is '24-'25. So, you hear me interchange prior and current sometimes, and that's the reason for it. So, you add in the current pilots, and then you subtract out your current year exclusions. That gets a number that's $7,800,000. You multiply that by the rate of inflation or 2%, whichever is less. It's 2% this year. And then you subtract out subsequent year pilots. So, think about it, when that pilot goes off the books, you're going to have a big add of that $103,000, but you're going to have no subtraction. So, because you have no subtraction, your tax cap is going to be extremely high. You add in your current year capital exclusions, or your, your next year, your '25-'26, and then you get that number, and then you, you add in or subtract any carryover that's allowed. And because you can never be hurt by it, and we have that capital exclusion, that number will probably always be 0. You get that 8.1 million, which is a difference dollar amount of $182,000, or 2.3%, which is our tax cap for the '25-'26 school year. And with that, I'll leave it open. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the tax cap?
They should start doing this in high school math.
Truly.
Real world application, dear Mr. Nardone.
Thank you. It's good.
Awesome.
Jeremy, before you, before you leave this, were you just, looking at this with the draft tax levy limit at 2.3?
Yep.
Talk again about why, if the district chooses to go out and collect less than that, talk about how that compounds for us.
Yeah, so, there's a compound effect anytime you don't go out to the cap, because you always start with the prior year levy. If the levy could have been a higher number, but it starts with a lower number, that affects you throughout the, throughout the history, right? So, we look back, and we look at 2012-13. We've actually done a calculation in-house that'll show you how many, how much taxes have foregone the district that would have been able to be put in a capital reserve to maybe do a capital improvement, and what your starting point in the levy would be. So, there's two different numbers. There's total taxes foregone. So, if I don't go out at the cap this year, and let's say we're 3,000 under, we're going to lose that 3,000 every year. So, the total over 12 years is 36,000, but my base is only going to be affected by roughly that $3,000, plus or minus a little bit of that increase year over year. So, it is very important for school districts to consider going out at the cap or changing your tax cap formula and doing adjustments, and that's something great that Kelmum does. We ban our buses. When you have short-term financing, and a ban stands for that bond anticipation note, it's a short-term financing vehicle, you can, not manipulate, but you can change how much interest and principal you want to pay in a given year. When you go out to bond that permanent financing, the number is what the number is. You cannot change it year over year. It's kind of like your house. You get an amortization schedule, you follow it. You don't have the ability to prepay it. So, because we ban, we can change that formula and say, hey, our tax cap this year is 4% because the pilot ends, but we can't ask for a 4% increase from the community, so we're going to do some adjustments on that debt to lower the tax cap. So, it's very important to go out at the tax cap because once you lose it, you can never get it back. Never get it back. I know it's strenuous on the, on the taxpayers, but if you look at, and again, the calculation and the, the information that we have done shows that the tax rate will go up minimal if you go out at the tax cap compared to this year 1,990. So, I always recommend, as the, the business side of things, we always look to go out at our maximum because once you lose it, can never get it back. And we all know costs are rising. 2% on our levy is $160,000. That's 2% of 8 million. When you look at your salary increases year over year, your health insurance increases year over year, it, it outpaces that. And who knows what's going to happen with state aid. If you saw the state aid numbers this year, looks favorable this year, but, but again, they're, they're trying to make everything right. They just created the formula. Going forward, I think what you're going to see, and a lot of districts are experiencing it, that 2% to minimum. 2% of our foundation aid is almost the same as 2% on our taxes. So, you're looking at $320,000 increase. If health insurance goes up 10%, that's $320,000 increase. Our health insurance budget's about 2.9 million right now. So, that's $290,000. So, leaves no room for salary increases. So that's $290,000, so leaves no room for salary increases. So something you always want to think about because you can never get it back. You can't say three years from now, man, I wish I would have taxed for that, let's go back and recoup it. It requires that override, and it's very tough to get that override from your taxpayers.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Just because I was starting to work on taxes today. Can you explain just real quickly about the STAR program and the Enhanced STAR? Because all of a sudden, we're getting Enhanced STAR. I don't know how we got it. I'm glad we did, but it made a big difference, so just explain what that is.
There's income limits on the Enhanced STAR and also an age. So once you hit a certain age, I want to say it's like 66 or 67, you qualify for the Enhanced STAR, and you also got to be in an income threshold. So it's one of those things you can phase out of. They actually changed the STAR program, I want to say four or five years ago now, that you can no longer ask for a rebate on your, or a credit on your taxes. You're actually going to get the rebate check in the mail. So people who are grandfathered in still see that, but if you move houses or do any changes, it's kind of like the W4 scenario. If you make any changes, you're now going to get that check in the mail. And that confuses a lot of people, too. In addition, there was something called the Property Tax Relief Credit, where if districts went below their tax cap, it would actually give a refund to some of their constituents. They did away with that about three years ago, so when that happened, everybody thought, hey, are we going over our tax cap? That's not the case. The state just did away with the program.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and all that information on the STAR, once it becomes available, we also put on our website.
Okay.
So I do want that to be known in the community as well. We try to put that out there. It's in our budget books, it's on our website, so you'll know exactly.
But is it automatic, or did you have to sign up for it? See, because I honestly don't know how we got, I mean, I'm sure because of the age, we got the Enhanced STAR, but I don't remember signing up for it.
Yeah, it should be automatic, but it's one of those things you definitely want to check to make sure that they're not messing up and they have all the information. So it shouldn't be automatic. It's one of those things that should be, but it's not always, it not always is. So you definitely want to look at it. You want to know those parameters. You want to know those dollar amounts. And if there's ever an issue with it, you want to contact the assessor. Because the assessor's actually the one who puts all those exclusions together. And then when we get the roll, it'll say how much is available for basic and Enhanced STAR.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Get old.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is presentation of administrative budget priorities. Mrs. Pete, I think you're going to begin first.
Thank you, Krista Hall. So I don't even know, let's see. Thank you. Think I would run technology. We're going to start with the district-wide lens, and truthfully, that's me. So the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, which is the office of Ian and myself, are actually asking for an increase of $20,000 to build a tech replacement cycle. So when I arrived, Ian did a great job. We worked collaboratively to look at a five-year plan. So currently, right now, we do a great job of replacing Chromebook student devices. Every year, we have about 100 that we purchase, so that's about $40,000 in just student devices. So we're asking for an increase in that budget to make sure that staff and students have the most up-to-date and efficient hardware. An example of that would be the Promethean boards on either side of you. They're about $2,500 to replace, so an additional $20,000 would get us basically four boards, and then we would be able to replace 10 teacher laptops over time, instead of like lump sum when they break. So that's truthfully kind of our goal, is to build a five-year replacement cycle where we're not at the last minute scrambling to order a board or a teacher device because something broke. That's it for that anyways. I'm going to hand it over to Megan.
All right, so I have two items on there that are unrelated as I look at them next to each other on that slide. So the first being an increase in the clerical support in the PPS department. So currently, there's an 11-month clerical secretary assigned to special education. Couple of things that that impacts. The regulations dictate in special ed, very strict timelines. Everything that comes in and out of our office is on a timeline. For example, we have five days to respond when our referral to the committee comes in. We have five, we have to give families five days' notice of a formal meeting that we're having. All of our evaluations have to happen within 60 days, 30 days when a student transfers in. And those numbers are tracked and reported to the state, so they're not suggestions, they are firm timelines. So how that impacts us in the office when we have an 11-month versus a 12-month, is those timelines exist as calendar days, not as school days. So when you have a break in school, that clock is still ticking. So for us in the office, we really have to do a lot of pre-planning as much as we can. If we wanted to have a meeting right after a break, to get that meeting notice out significantly before the break. If a referral comes in to us shortly before a break starts, we have a tighter timeline to respond to it if we're putting up against a break. Where it really impacts us is the summer. We do still have students in session, students who require extended school year programs. This past summer, we had about 20 students actively in a school program throughout the summer. We also have a lot of requests that come in throughout the summer. They're for existing students wanting to have program reviews, talk about their services prior to the next year starting, transfer students coming in, evaluations, families wanting to refer their children to the committee. And again, those timelines still exist. Even though it's summer, we still are on a timeline when those things come in. So the 11-month clerical position allows for 20 days in the summer, but regardless of how we've kind of mapped it out over the past couple of summers, we're always left with some gaps of support there in anticipating as much as we can, but scrambling when there's not that support there. So the ask is for an increase in about $4,000. You see it down to the exact dollar amount, because I of course asked Mr. Nardone for what the cost would be associated there. So an increase from an 11-month position to 12-month position would be about $4,000 for that piece. The second item is an increase of about $5,000 in health supplies, and this is to continue our replacement plan on our AED machines throughout the district. So we have seven machines right now, and we are in a replacement cycle. We're replacing about two, up to two machines each year. Once we replace all the current machines, we have about three more, three more to replace. Once they're all up with the newest model, we'll have to then begin replacing the batteries and the pads in those machines. Once that cycle has gone through, looking at how we've replaced machines in the past, we're probably, we get about 10 years' life on the machine before it becomes hard to find the parts for it. So that's kind of what we ran into these past few years with our older machines, is that we ran out of the ability to replace the batteries in the pads. With the newer models, they're just not making parts for the previous machines. So an increase in 5,000 would keep us on track to make sure they're up, those machines are always up to date.
Thank you so much.
It's Ryan.
There we go, elementary. Okay, so the first ask, I guess, I want to bring to the table is to collaborate with the Center of Youth for a social learning specialist or a crisis specialist for elementary students. What this person would do would be specifically trained in crisis intervention and prevention to provide tier-two and tier-three intervention for our students in crisis in the moment. So when a student is in crisis currently in the building, it's me, and it's Mr. Green, and hopefully the counselor can get there in time, but this crisis specialist is trained for situations that arise, like what we're experiencing in the elementary now. Their ultimate goal is not to remove them from the learning, but to give them the space they need to intervene as quickly as possible and then bring them back into learning. And that would be our hope. So this person would truly be trained specifically to help with immediate crisis and restorative practices, of course, after the crisis occurs. So the ask is posterable or aidable? You'll receive aid on this position coming back to us should we move forward with this. I know that colleagues here have had experiences with the Center of Youth as well as my principal group. I put out an all-call, and everybody spoke very favorably about their collaboration with the center. So that would be a big ask for me. The rest are modest increases for things that we have been piloting and have been talking about for the past few years. So the first one, of course, is the elementary musical. I have been currently taking my budget and then borrowing from other lines to make some of these events happen. Should the board want to continue with the musical production, I really do need an increase in the budget to support it. After two years of piloting, we're noticing that although we bring in great revenue from the musical and sold-out shows, they have to be ones that the kids want to come to, and those are the expensive ones. Those are the Disney ones. Those have licensed, you know, commitments to them, and they cost more. So the increase would be about $4,600 to $6,000 to pull off the production. That includes two directors, co-directors, to pull off the show. We do have about 60 students, 50 to 60 students that participate, and I don't see that number dwindling anytime soon. So that would be, you know, to keep the musical going. Also, we talked about this when I gave the presentation on our, where we were landing with our music and arts enhancements, and this would be the increase of the $2,000 for the band instruments. We know it comes every single year. We do not have it allocated. I wait to see how my budget shakes out at the end of the year, and should I have some money left, that's where we clean our instruments. And I don't want to plan like that. It doesn't feel right. So about $2,000 is what Mrs. Peterson estimates right now for a replacement, or replacement and cleaning for certain instruments. And my last one is also a modest increase of $1,000 to continue the STEM program that we opened up. So we created a brand-new program that our K-5 students experience on a daily basis. We did it very smartly with our COVID funds. We really were able to build a program with these one-time purchases through our COVID funds to get us the Glowforge machine, to get us the laser printer, to get us some supplies to get us up and running. And now, obviously, we're going to have consumable materials. I funded it with my current budget of $1,000 right now, but if we are going to keep the STEAM program growing, we definitely need to make it its own budget line and to have about $1,000 in there for consumables. That's it for the elementary school.
I have one quick question.
Please ask.
For the crisis intervention specialist, would that be our employee, or would it be someone that comes in from an agency?
It would be ours, but also collaborated with the agency, right?
Technically employed by the Center for Youth. We would go into contract with the Center for Youth, making that entire contract eligible for aid, which is fantastic. We would be part of the entire process. We would be at the table for the interview process. We would help select. The Center for Youth would then take over everything logistics from there. They will train that staff member, they will provide support for that staff member, but that staff member would report to the Center for Youth, but then under our daily direction, the way the contract would read.
I like that better than having it be our employee because it sounds like it's a student-specific, and if that student were to age out, we wouldn't want to just cut an employee who otherwise deserves it all.
Sure, so your crisis support folks, definitely, they can also do in-school suspension, they can do alternatives to suspension. So they've got, the Center for Youth has a very solid curriculum that they basically train and then send this person with. So even thinking about more than just a child is having a bad day, and more like we could not put another counselor in that building at this cost, but we could put somebody in this building that would allow the counselor to have another level of support. With the Center for Youth, they also do so much training that they require their folks to do a ton of data collection. So it also would allow the building to see who the kids are that need support, what kind of support, how are we intervening, therefore, what type of staff development do we need to offer back to our teachers to try to make more systemic change? So in the past, my experience with the Center for Youth has been unbelievable in what you're able to glean from it as a principal and being able to pulse with somebody. I know Lindsay and I've discussed it, she had a similar experience at York, so both of us come to CalMum with an experience here. Fantastic organization to get involved with. They're a not-for-profit, and they definitely prioritize the training of their staff.
And I love that they would be housed in our building.
Absolutely.
So it's not a, yeah, part of our school culture, not three days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're here. And crisis happens on Tuesday, they're not here. So this was very enticing to me and to learn more about.
If we needed them, say, for summer, because we decided we wanted to do a formal staff development, have that person present, the Center for Youth would have them present and continue to pay them. So it's just, there's very little downside there.
Yeah, I feel like having the contract employees come in, in the past, has been disappointing with their commitment to our school.
And having them here with a spot and full-time would be, definitely change that dynamic, because you're not wrong, right? When you do that contract piece, they don't feel all in, and we definitely want this person to feel all in and care for our kids, just as we do.
Can you give, I'm sorry, a quick example, a child in crisis, what could that look like, and what would an intervention be?
That's why they're there. Currently, if they have a student is having a complete meltdown, I don't know how else to explain that other than, you know, maybe some violent acts or just some crisis within themselves, not able to attain in the classroom, needing to have a moment outside of the space. They're there to help de-escalate and to prevent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chanel, will you just speak briefly on, you can do this.
Thank you.
When we talk about aidable, I think this, I've been here a while, and so I know what that means and the value that that means, but I think it's good for whoever remembers and anyone watching what that means. It's aidable.
Are you calculating already?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, what happens is that as a school district, we pay first. So even when we talk about aid, sometimes people will say, well, you're going to get aid on that, so it's cheap. In the first year that you're buying a service, you're actually paying the full value of the service. So in the first year of this, we will budget for it. It will cost us $55,000, right? At the end of the year, when we get our aid check, we will get 80...
Roughly 74%, which is about $44,000 back, minus any deductions at BOCES plus that.
So the position will cost us how much in the end?
Net $11,000 minus deductions, so.
That's what aidable means.
So I just think it's a good review.
Yes, it's fantastic. Any single thing that we can buy as a school district, that we can buy through a BOCES and generate aid on it, we do. We spend a lot of time as the administrative team. That's the first question, can we make it aidable? If there's a way to make something aidable, we are chasing after that money. It creates for us a revenue on the back end.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Michelle.
We're going to see every half that does use a HES today. Thank you.
Absolutely. This is one of my favorite things to talk about, academic programming and student achievement. And Michelle did a great job kind of talking about the STEAM program at the elementary school. So currently, we have a K-5 STEAM program, and I would say a 9-12 program as well with Project Lead the Way. And we're looking at, the ask is adding a full-time STEM teacher, salary and benefits with a price tag of around $90,000, and that person would provide STEAM and STEM experiences at the middle level, so 6 through 8. Currently, our 6th graders do have a course in STEAM in the library, and so we're looking to fill that gap specifically, probably in 8th grade, and then also begin an enrichment program. I think our compact committee has done a lot of work on the curriculum design and program development, and some of the conversation has been around a gap in 8th grade. And so how can we fill that gap? We have a plan. We're building with the U of R a science course that will deploy our current science staff that still leaves a gap in their schedule, and this would, this teacher would assist and help with that, as well as bring our program pre-K through 12, which would be a pathway and give a lot of career and college readiness in that field. In addition, this teacher could offer enrichment programs during home base in addition to the coursework. And Dr. Chanel, is there anything else you'd like to add to that for the vision around that program?
I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. The second ask would be improving our academic supports in the middle of the day during home base. So if we hired two launch monitors at the cost of $12,500 each, that would free up some of our teachers during that time to provide intervention, which is reteaching, pre-teaching, and some homework help, skill development, and that would allow us to just have more hands on deck for teachers with students during that time. during that time in the middle of the day.
Basically, all I will add then to that is that over the course of the last several years, since we did our strategic plan, we have been, and then combined the building, six, 12, we've been looking to maximize our faculty, right? To make sure that everybody is teaching. We've got the same bell schedule. We have folks that used to just teach middle school, now teaching at the high school, and people that taught at the high school now also teaching at the middle level. So you've really watched your staff sort of spread across the six, 12 and create one building for us.
Their capacity.
The capacity, we've reached capacity. It's going to be very challenging to give anybody anything else in terms of assignment. Even if they had a little room in their schedule, you're talking about, and I was explaining this to Lindsay the other day, the way our master schedule works, we have one learning lab or study hall per block. And so the second I take a teacher, a science teacher, so we're going to say, okay, let's take our science teachers, we can maximize them one more time. We maximize them one more time. Who?
Now is in that learning lab.
Who does the learning lab? Who does the study hall? Right? So no matter what we do right now as we're building the master schedule, and you guys know I've spoken to this even last year about the hole in the master schedule and what are we going to do? Because each time you're trying to leverage in your master schedule, you can't just add seven things. You'll end up with a schedule that won't run. So it has been a slow and steady three-year process. This gap, this need that we have is definitely here. We're going to work one more time in case we can't get this position in this budget to backfill one more time. It's going to create some other issues for us. We're going to have to figure out supervision of study halls. So we're at that balancing time right now to add, no matter which way we do it, we're going to be a little, we're going to be a little off staffing number wise. Thank you.
Sure. I think.
There's one more slide.
Okay. Do you want me to talk about it?
I can, I can. Basically, you guys, if you recall, I'm just going to give you a specific example. Let's just talk about modified girls volleyball. So this year, modified girls volleyball, we had probably enough students to break into two teams. So instead, what we did is we broke the kids into two teams, and then they sort of split their competition. We need to develop a standard of care where we say that once we hit a certain number, whether it's in football, or soccer, or volleyball, whatever that number is at any of our competitive levels at modified, that we are just committed to splitting the team in two and creating two schedules so that the kids don't lose competition, they don't lose opportunity. So because our budget wasn't staged to support that, there's always a hesitation. I would like to see us plan so that if that happens, we just have a default and we support every team equally, that if the numbers in this team hit a certain amount of participation, we split and plan accordingly. And that's the ask here from that budget department.
I have a question about the STEM teacher proposal.
Okay.
Is that, so Mrs. Pete's had the benefit of experiencing a different district. Thank you for coming here. Would this be modeled after that district? You've seen how this works, I think, at York.
Yes, I have, in a different master schedule.
Okay.
So I do think that that does play into it, and the semester block has so many advantages that I've seen since I've been here, that I think we wouldn't want to undo that. But I think some of the coursework that is being offered in other districts in that STEM world could be done here in a different way. Is it a ten-week rotation? Is it every other day twenty weeks? So I think a lot of that coursework could be done within our structure and within our schedule. Hard to pull that off without a teacher that's passionate about that.
Right.
Because I do think that's a niche. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I just wanted, you've seen it work.
Yes.
Like, it's not like a frills and this is a good time, but there's no measurable to it.
Correct. I would say, like, an example, an example that I've seen work is, we had rotations in my previous district where kids would sign up and have, be exposed to all science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. So in eighth grade, for example, they would rotate through, and that would help them make some course decisions once they entered high school. And so that was kind of the model that we built. I think we, as a district, would have to talk about that, like, what's our vision around that, what would our model be? But that was kind of our focus. Every middle schooler is exposed so that when they go to choose programming for high school, they have at least a background on what they're interested in.
Thank you.
We have the space in middle school block five right now to build a rotation. So you would see that if you studied our schedule, that there's space for the rotation. There's just not staff to teach some of those other areas that we could be offering. So, you know, the parents will comment about, we are definitely staffed in music, right? So our kids are getting more music than they need. We are staffed in art, so our kids are getting more art than they need per commissioner's regulations. But we're maximizing the staff that we have. Should we be able to add folks, right? Then you could create the rotation, and maybe kids that don't want to take extra art or don't want to take extra music would be able to opt into courses that they do want to take. And that's sort of where we're stuck right now.
Any other questions? Thank you to the administrative team for that. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to number five. Approval of transportation request to an out-of-district, non-public school for 2024, 2025. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the transportation request to out-of-district, non-public school for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 school year, per Board Policy 5720. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a change, student is now attending that school or moved here and is requesting transportation?
Moving from homeschool to private placement.
Thank you.
Private school.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Sale and disposal of school district property. Ms. Booth put in front of you the final bids that came in yesterday. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, award the bid for miscellaneous items to the highest bidders from Auctions International website, per Board Policy 5250. Sale and disposal of school district property. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving to number seven. Approval of new roster position of school bus attendant. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the creation of a roster position for the civil service title of school bus attendant. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we're moving to creation of transportation proposition. Dr. Chanel, would you like to speak on this before I read it?
Yeah, so in your backup notes, I did my best to explain a couple of key pieces here with this bus. This bus, in terms of the numbers that you see there, we are now going to start asking for buses that have air conditioning in them. So you'll see the cost of the bus going up by $15,500. That's because we do anticipate with some of the laws that are coming out in the state right now around temperature, both in school, we imagine that will follow suit and into our, onto our school buses. So you see us accounting for that with this purchase. We do have until the year 2035 before we have to stop using combustible engines and move into electric buses. This bus that we purchased, we will get its full life out of. We're on a ten-year cycle for bus replacement, so this is a good investment for the district. Politics, on a side note, because we did attend the legislative breakfast, I've also had opportunity to meet our elected officials one-on-one, and I think it's been quite intriguing to listen to school districts all across the state of New York now talking about what electrification is going to do to our schools. We don't have our solid numbers yet. We're probably about a week out from that, but we have several runs that we will not be able to do with electric buses. And some of the conversation that was so interesting to hear was our elected officials saying, well, it's a law now, please tell us how it's going to impact you. School districts across the state of New York are now paying for studies to basically go back to our elected officials and say, what you've asked us to do is not doable. So I've heard a lot of superintendents in the last month saying things like, we just would like you to use some common sense. Give us an opportunity to study things before you pass laws that we can't fulfill. So I just wanted to plug that, that we're not alone in that, and it definitely be worth buying a school bus.
Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, place the following resolution on the ballot on May 20th, 2025. Proposition number two, shall the following resolution be adopted to wit? Resolved at the Board of Education of the Calhounian Monford Central School District, is hereby authorized to undertake the acquisition of one school bus at an estimated maximum cost of $200,000. And that such cost or such, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of a tax to be collected in annual installments. And in anticipation of such tax, debt obligations of the school district, as may be necessary not to exceed $200,000, shall be issued, or the school district may enter into an installment purchase contract if the Board of Education determines that it is in the best interest of the school district to finance the purchase in that method. Two, at such meeting, taxes to be levied by installments will be proposed for authorized indebtedness provided for payment of the acquisition of a school bus at an estimated maximum cost of not to exceed $200,000. Such taxes shall be levied upon all the taxable property of the district. Shall be levied in annual installments, it shall be of such amounts of levying in such years as may be determined by the Board of Education. Three, the district clerk or the clerk's designee is hereby directed to add the above to the notice of the annual meeting of the school district. Four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Award of prime contracts. Dr. Chanel, you would like to talk about this.
I actually mentioned it when Kevin was presenting, but I'll just say it again, that you are looking at contracts that have actually put the district in such a good place. We're going to be able to have conversations in the near future and chase after work that we thought we were going to have to leave on the sideline, given how well these fits came in. So again, just a thank you to campus construction. You guys are looking at some of the best numbers we could have possibly gotten. Congratulations.
Award of prime contracts, whereas the Calhounian Monford Central School District has been authorized by a community referendum dated December 5th, 2023, and whereas, the Board of Education further requests the district administration to facilitate the award of contract to the capital construction project known as 2025-26 Capital Project. Be it resolved, the Calhounian Monford Central School District Board of Education, after review of bid results and recommendation for award from Campus CMG, authorizes the superintendent, Dr. Rebecca Chanel, to sign contracts below on behalf of the district as listed. Site work by Wayne Gravel, general trades, Aljair Construction, Mechanical, Maza Mechanical Services, Plumbing, LMC Industrial Contractors, Electrical, Concord Electric, Roofing, Almarw Davis, Access Controls, Day Automation, Building Management, Day Automation, Auditorium Seating, Facilities Equipment and Services. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving to executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education adjourn to executive session at 7:23 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. May I please have a motion?
Hey, Liz, before we do that, did you do number seven, the new roster position, the bus attendant?
Yes.
Did we?
Yeah.
Did I miss that totally? Sorry.
I'd rather be sure than miss something. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion. Resolved at the Board of Education, return to regular session at 9:20 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Going to move to personnel. I have personnel one through eight. Can I have a motion for personnel one through eight as listed? They are approval of mentor, permanent appointment of building maintenance person, permanent appointment of building maintenance mechanic, approval substitute, resignation of business